Item eight, public hearing. Item A. Consider introduction of ordinance 616 to approve development agreement case DA-1-16. Proposed first amendment to OPUS Office Center Development Agreement, 3,000 to 3,500 Marina Boulevard, Sierra Point. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. 2008, the city council granted land use approvals for the development of the OPUS Office Center in Sierra Point, encompassed about 445,000 square feet of office building and two, or area in two buildings and a five-level parking structure. So, 3,000 to 3,500 Marina Boulevard. In 2011, these approvals were extended by the city council. In conjunction with that approval, there was a requirement that the project be built to LEED-GOLD standards and to formalize that agreement, a development agreement was approved in 2012. The development agreement further extended the term of the approvals had, was going to expire. Those term limits were extended to June of 2022. And the property owner is now interested in further extending those approvals. Additionally, over the past several years, independent of this approval, city's been exploring options to regain control of parcel R at Sierra Point. As you might recall, it's the publicly-owned property, about 3.4 acres, vacant property at the easterly end of Sierra Point Parkway. And that property is subject to a long-term lease to, to a private developer that the city granted in 1984 to allow for that site to be developed with a retail or restaurant complex. And to date, that's never occurred. And it so happens that the same property owner who is the applicant in the 3,000 to 3,500 Marina Boulevard property is the same leaseholder of the parcel R site. So, to resolve both the city's desire to retain control or regain control of parcel R as well to extend the land use entitlements, the current development agreement application amendment is before you this evening. It was reviewed and approved by the planning commission earlier this year in January. I'll just kind of touch briefly on the deal points in the development agreement. Number one, it establishes a new 10-year term superseding the current expiration date. The effect of, or the, the effect of that is expanding, extending the expiration date from June of 2022 to June of 2027. So, five-year extension in the permit entitlements. Retaining the LEED-GOLD requirement, clarifying city procedures regarding R and D, which is already permitted in Sierra Point, commercial district zoning. Another term is to require the applicant to install solar panels on the roof of the parking structure, requires the applicant to quit claim or otherwise terminate their existing leasehold and related development rights over parcel R, and requires the applicant to pay $300,000 to the city for unspecified site preparation of parcel R, and subsequently pay the city 50 cents per square foot for the, the office portion of the building when those permits are issued, again, for the use, the city's use in, in improving parcel R, whatever time the city chooses to do that. So, again, staff's recommending the approval of case DA-116 and introduce, and introduction of ordinance 616. I'll answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Questions?
I have none.
So, John, um, well, first of all, I just want to, you know, just thank the developer and, you know, working with the community to come up with a win-win situation. I know that you guys really don't want to be in the restaurant business and retail business, you know, you want to work on, you know, potentially, you know, doing office or R and D at your site. And, you know, I think it's great that we have this opportunity to get this land back so that we can use it. We own it, but we lease it, and we don't have the right to, to use it. And it's such a wonderful place to potentially have, you know, a new park overlooking the marina and connecting with the current open space that, that is there. You know, in regards to the development agreement, and we talked a little bit about a hotel option, but that's, that is a use that's permitted out at Sierra Point. If, if the developer wanted to come back and say, you know, I'd, I'd actually like to do a hotel, what, would that change the development agreement, or how would we, we go about being able to accomplish that, that change in use?
Well, you are correct. It's a permitted use in Sierra Point. One would expect that the, at least the design permit entitlement would need to be revised substantially.
Obviously, yes.
That would be the vehicle by which such a change would be reviewed by the city. And then whatever supplemental or revised environmental work to evaluate the impacts of a hotel versus office complex would be
Okay.
addressed under that kind of change.
No restrictions, though, that would be put on by the city? In regards to that, that particular type of use?
Uh, no, it's a permitted by right. It would be a design permit. There's no discretionary review.
Those are good. Okay. All right, thank you.
Terry?
Thank you. I did have a couple of questions, and first of all, I think that for the public, it needs, this should be explained that the parcel R is the dirt hump that has been the eyesore and the subject of much speculation on what we could do with it, but we didn't have control over it. In the Sierra Point Guidelines Subcommittee, I think, is where Cliff and I really sort of thrashed this out as far as what would be an acceptable way to regain control of that parcel for public use and for a public benefit, which hasn't really been vetted on what we want to do or what the public wants to see with it. But we knew that by having control of, of that parcel, we would have more opportunities along our waterfront for whether it be park, open space, interactive space, you know, a lot of things that were possible. And so I think it was something that we've been working on for three or four years and trying to get a handle on and figure out what works for everybody to, to make that happen. In the staff report on the discussion of the developer agreement 1-16, item D says that we are requiring the applicant to install solar panels on the roof of the parking entrance, or the parking structure, and it seemed a little vague to me, so I was wondering if that was addressed further in the staff report, or if we had an idea of what those requirements would entail. I mean, it's not just some token amount, it's something that we're hoping will offset our footprint with that.
Well, I think there are a couple of issues. One is since, you know, the actual design would be, it would need to be designed to both accommodate the circulation on the site, roof, roof-mounted equipment, et cetera. So, no one's had the opportunity to design a system yet, so we weren't able to sort of specify a quantity of, of power to be generated until you do that design process. The other issue, and was discussed, I think, preliminarily in the development agreement, certainly in the intent is to, you know, obviously maximize that, that facility to offset the use of, of the complex to the extent feasible. But again, not knowing who the end users are, what their energy demands are, it was, again, very difficult for anybody to commit to saying, we shall be able to, you know, offset the, the project demand. Certainly, the intent is to, to cover as much of that rooftop with solar as, as feasibly makes sense and practically makes sense.
So, and I, and I think that when we had first looked at it, when they had talked about the stubbing instead of the installation on the parking structure, it was mostly to offset the use in the actual parking structure itself
Mm-hmm.
because of the high energy demands that the building and the HVAC equipment that would need on that. But I'd like that a little threshed out if we could, you know, when we get to that point. And then the other thing that came up, and I, I didn't even discuss this with staff, was a couple nights ago, when we were having our planning commission discussions, that, that one of our outgoing planning commissioners had commented on the design itself of the parking structure, and that, that when it was in its original permitting phase, the, that she had had some concerns about the safety of how long that parking structure was, for the safety of people entering and exiting by the remoteness, you know, the length of the corridors to get to their parking structures and whether that would be safe. And I just hope that while it, it's probably not the place to address it in this development agreement, that we look back at that, because I wasn't aware of those safety concerns or the possibility of concerns for that parking structure. So, maybe when it does get to the design phase, that the developer and the city would, would just look at those, those issues and see if there's any mitigation that we could do.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
Great. Good comments. So, I had the same comment as to the solar, because it was vague, and I, you know, I'd like, we'd like to, I think, all see as much usage offset by those solar panels as possible. And, you know, I just, in looking at the map and, you know, knowing that we've, that the neighboring properties has now moved forward with their renovations at 7,000 Marina, I believe it is, you know, I'm, I'm glad to see that attention is being given to this property as well, because it's, it's even closer to the 101. It has probably the best visibility out of all our properties at Sierra Point, and I hope that, you know, development of these parcels can really help spur development of Sierra Point, which, you know, has so much potential. And I'm also very glad to see that the city was able, will be able to regain control of parcel R, which is right along our waterfront next to the marina, an ideal location for a park or some other public space. So, I'm very pleased to see, you know, the owners here and to, to see that we're paying attention to these parcels, and we'll hopefully see something out there in the near future when the, when the market dictates that. So, at this point, I wanted to invite the owners up to say a few words if they'd like.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Marcus Laduka. I'm land use counsel for Sierra Point LLC. And I'm pleased to be before you this evening with the recommendation of your staff and the unanimous recommendation of your planning commission for this amendment to the development agreement. Staff's gone over, not only the staff report, but their presentation, all the details, but what you have before you, not only the work of the subcommittee, but your staff to come up with a very good deal in exchange, for the city, in exchange for that five-year extension of the development agreement, in terms of the benefits to the public and to your residents. One thing we did want to emphasize, including for people that may be in the audience, is that there is no change to the square footage of the project that was approved, no change in the height of the buildings, there's no change to open space, there's no change to the approved access and circulation, there is no change to the impacts that were analyzed before, and as found in the addendum to the previous environmental document, there's been no change to those impacts or more severe impacts. So, but basically what you have is in exchange for a five-year extension of the DA and vesting of those, and, uh, those land use approvals that you previously gave to the project and to the property owner, you have those benefits that were outlined, the fee, the payment of, of funds for improvements to parcel R, getting parcel R back 47 years early, plus the solar panels on the roof of the garage. And again, we don't have users set up, so we don't know what percentage of their energy needs, the desire is to try to meet as much of those energy needs as possible by having solar on the entire roof of the parking garage. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that the council will have, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions?
No.
Okay. Would anyone from the public?
It's a public hearing, so we need to open a public hearing.
Okay. Like to open the public hearing? Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right. Well, before I make a motion, I just want to say thank you, Terry. It was great collaborating with you on this. You're right, it did take some years, but I'm glad that eventually we got there. And, you know, you're, you're a big leader on the direction that, that we went, and yeah, I just want to thank you for, for that. And, and I'm honored to be able to make a motion to consider introduction of ordinance 616 to approve development agreement case DA-1-16, and propose first amendment to, to OPUS Office Center Development Agreement at 3,000 to 3,500 Marina Boulevard at Sierra Point.
And I would like to second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Terry and Cliff, for your work on it, and staff and planning commission, too.
It was really a, a vision for the Sierra Point and the marina and, and to, to get that, so it was a, it's always nice to see something come to fruition and look forward to what we can have out there.
Absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you. We look forward to seeing the future of that development.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Take care.
Okay. Okay. So, now we're moving on to an MB of old business, review of proposals for the Mountain Festival event.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members. I'm here tonight to provide you with an update regarding the newly proposed event for the summer. As you know, the council created an ad hoc subcommittee to work with the Parks and Recreation Commission to explore the possibility of organizing a large-scale special event in town. The subcommittee met on December 21st and discussed combining a run with a music-oriented event. Following this meeting, two event organizers came forward expressing an interest in proposing their vision for the event. In the end, one, only one formal proposal is before you tonight. Unfortunately, the alternate vendor withdrew based on their capacity to facilitate the event in the timeframe. Let's see. On January 25th, the ad hoc subcommittee reconvened to review the proposal and make a determination regarding the type of event that they desired to propose to the city council. The official date being proposed is Saturday, July 8th. The running event co-sponsor, would be sponsored by Excelsior Running Club, would consist of a 50K and a half marathon on San Bruno Mountain, as well as a 5K run on the Crocker Park Trail. Attendance would be estimated around approximately 200 people. The running club would work a San Bruno Mountain watch on the event and make them a beneficiary. The subsequent Mountain Oasis Festival aspires to connect the community, support local nonprofit organizations, and attract people from surrounding neighborhoods to experience Brisbane and the magic of San Bruno Mountain. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review the proposal in front of you tonight from Jimmy Leslie and Michael Ross. They came to a council meeting, I don't know if it was the last one or a couple ago, a couple ago, to kind of introduce themselves, and hopefully you got a sense of their enthusiasm through their proposal. The event would consist of several musical groups playing from approximately noon to dusk in the community park. It would be complemented by food vendors such as the Lions Club and potentially food trucks, a small beer and wine garden, the committee talked about potentially opening that up to Best PTO to offer it as a fundraiser to their group. It would also include a kids-centered makers' tent and vendor tables. The event would be laid out so that San Bruno Mountain serves as the backdrop, and the park would be secured by a fence which would allow for admission to be charged at the gate. This would be the first kind of event that closes off the park to casual users for a large portion of the weekend and would restrict access to the playground. Ticket prices are suggested around $20 per person, with all kids under 10 being free. Attendance in the first year is estimated around 5 to 800 people. The purpose would be to establish a sustainable reason, regional festival, drawing people to Brisbane, with the hopes of providing additional revenue to local businesses, supporting local nonprofits, and possibly parks and recreation programs down the road. Another consideration might be that if an event like this were to grow, as we hope that it would, how would that be scaled in the future, given the capacity of the park? The estimated cost is around $15,000 to $30,000, minus any revenues that the city would realize as a result of ticket sales and sponsorships. The hope is that over a three-year period, the event would become increasingly profitable in order to offset all expenses and begin generating revenue for San Bruno Mountain Watch as well as the city. So, with that, I'm happy to respond to any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you. It was a, first of all, I just want to say it was a really well-written staff report, and especially the part put together by Jimmy Leslie and Michael Ross. I was very pleased to see all the detail and hard work they put into it. It definitely showed all the different angles that they thought about, so that was great. Questions for staff, or Cliff, if you'd like to comment more?
Yeah, well, there's just one thing, you know, so, Noreen talked about, you know, at the end of three years, you know, making a profit. And so, we felt, okay, let's, let's give it three years. If, if we're not making the money that we think that we should be through ticket sales and sponsorship, that, you know, perhaps not doing it anymore. So, it was
Trial run.
Kind of a trial run. You know, the council has budgeted $50,000 for council, what is it? How's it worded?
One-time project.
One-time projects. So, I mean, this, this is well below that. So, yeah, I mean, the, the, the amount is 15 to 30. Well, you know, I, I think 30 would be, 30 is, seems, actually, pretty high.
30 is on the high side. I mean, what 30 is, is if there is very little interest in the first year. So, yeah, their goal is, if they're assuming 500 people, $20 a person, that'd be $10,000. We're also hoping to get some sponsorships. So, you know, it's hard with, without knowing what the first year is. You know, the staff report that Noreen wrote shows what the most it would be at the 30, but we would hope that they would be able to recoup about 15,000 in the first year.
Okay.
Sorry, Noreen, I stepped on your
That's okay. Yeah, no, I think that's a really good point, because, you know, we obviously don't want to be spending like $30,000 a year on something that we, we don't get back, you know, because we already do our summer concert series. But I think if this can be a moneymaker
Mm-hmm.
and also provide good business to our, our local food, food businesses, et cetera, I, you know, I think that it would be a worthwhile investment. So, thank you for your creativity and bringing this to us.
Well, you know, one other thing. So, I did submit a permit to, a permit application to the county and was denied. So, I, they had some issues, and I need to revise it.
For the running event.
For the running event, yes. And so, you know, they have new restrictions and regulations in place. So, even though there's a, some more race in June, yes, I need to, you know, adjust that permit and application and, and resubmit it. But there's a possibility that, that the county will continue to deny it. So, there might not be a, a race component to this, so I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Oh.
And depends how many people, you know, because it is a sensitive area for habitat and stuff.
That was one of their concerns. You know, we had a, an aid station on top of the mountain where the Ridge Trail and the Fire Road meet, and we were going to have access to that site through PG&E. We were hoping that they would be a sponsor. You know, maybe that didn't really get thoroughly vetted, so we, we, you know, I've altered the course and we've eliminated that aid station. And more of the run, I haven't shared that with anybody, it's only in my head, but that more of the race would be in, in Brisbane and less on the mountain, so that then you would only need two aid stations, one at Radio Road at the top, and, and then one at the saddle picnic area in the main part of the park. So, very accessible to, you know, to the, to the volunteers.
Okay. Okay.
So, of the, of the cost of the event, and I see that, you know, they, Jimmy Leslie has put in a, a, a nice proposal with their amount. The run portion of it, was that going to be funded out of the, the budget also, or, or that was from the Excelsior Club?
So, the, the club would, would do the race similar to how the club does the, the 5K race out at the marina. And in the past, the city has provided some, oh, what's the partnership?
Partnership.
Yeah, you know, and then the, the proceeds have gone to the Best PTO. Here, the, the proceeds would go to the, would go to Mountain Watch. But the other, all the expenses of, in, in running the race would, would fall on the Excelsior Running Club, not on the city or Jimmy and, and Michael.
Okay. So, their, their proposals
Separate, yes.
As a separate, so if one component were to not happen in subsequent years or in this year, you know, if, if the permitting doesn't go through, then that wouldn't affect the ability for the entire, for the, the other portion to go through?
That is correct.
So, that's why there's no budget in there for the running portion of it?
Mm-hmm.
You know, and I think that I, and I, I think you're being very creative by putting two very dissimilar events together. It just, it makes for a really long volunteer day or, or city day if you're starting an, an early event with a later on evening event, so I hope
These races are long.
But they start early.
They start early. They start early, but they take a long time to finish. Yeah, and, you know, it's, it's definitely a unique type of situation. I mean, if the race does happen, you know, we'd like to embed the, in the race application, a ticket to the concert and, and a, a lunch ticket, the Lions. And so that, you know, the, the part of that money that is in the race application for the individual goes into this endeavor.
Clark?
Yeah. Thank you, Noreen. Sorry for keeping you so late.
Happy to be here.
It's all Stuart's fault. You can talk to him tomorrow about it. Anyway, you know, just, just some things that kind of jump out at me at the, at the proposal, you know, that, you know, and I was talking about, you know, the language a little bit, you know, because I'd like to see all Brisbane food businesses invited, including the caterers. And they said, used the term on whose food we like, well, who's we? I mean, because, you know, they're all businesses here in Brisbane, and I'd like, you know, them and everybody to have an opportunity to either say no or yes, or something like that. And it's Best PTO, PTA. Yeah. Just let them know that. But, no, I, I think this is a, a good idea, and Cliff, I know you and Madison worked on this, it was staff, too, and appreciate the
Yeah.
work, and let's see how it goes.
And Theresa Jimenez and Renee Marman from the Parking Rec
Yeah, yeah.
Good. Okay.
Thank you. So, I'm good with this.
All right. I had a few questions. So, we, I think we had talked, maybe at a subcommittee meeting, or maybe the, the last time this was presented, about how you would enclose it and still allow people to have access to the playground. And from the, the map that I saw, it looks like the playground would be within the gated area, so it, to, to prevent people from, you know, trying to get a freebie, I guess, by saying, I'm watching my kids at the playground. So, is that okay, like legally, to close off a playground? And also, the bathrooms, I noticed, were not going to be accessible. Instead, there would be porta potties, and I was wondering why, maybe I'm, maybe I'm mistaken, but it said there would be tape across the bathrooms, and I was wondering what the rationale was for that.
Cliff, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if I remember correctly from the subcommittee meeting, we had talked about enclosing all of that space, including the playground and the restrooms.
Okay.
So that the restrooms would be accessible to use
Oh, okay.
In addition to.
The porta potties would be in addition, too.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. 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 So, then the playground would just, it would be included to, I guess, allow people to enjoy the concert from the playground. But of course, with paying for it. So, there, there's the admission price, and does that allow, or do you envision having, like, in-and-out privileges, you know, so that, you know, if someone wants to come in, like, for one of the bands early on, and, you know, come back in the evening, is that something that would be allowed?
That's something, yeah, that's something that was discussed by the subcommittee as well.
Okay. Because I, I noticed also that you, I think that's a good thing, and that you talked about having, or maybe it was, it was in the proposal, that they talked about having tickets, like paper tickets printed on fancy cardstock, or cardstock, I should say, and it would cost, they said, a couple hundred dollars. And it, I'm wondering if that's necessary, or if you could just do, like, online sale, sales and do And it would cost, they said, a couple hundred dollars. And I'm wondering if that's necessary? Or if you could just do like online sales and do hand stamps or bracelets? You know, something just, you know, to cut down on the paper and the printing costs? Because I know like when I go, for example, like to the county fairs, you know, you can order it online and just show them your phone and get in and then they stamp you or give you a bracelet. So, just want to make that suggestion. Also, the kids' family activities area, I noticed was next to the stage. So, I would just suggest... I wanted to suggest that your... I'm sorry, the maker tent is next to the stage. So, I would just be mindful of the noise to make sure the speakers aren't pointing in that direction. And also, I like the idea of having a maker's tent. It also... I also wanted to suggest that you reach out to the county library to see if they can provide some book services or their bookmobile. I remember from the pop-up workshop for Parkside, they had a book area where kids could just, you know, sit around, listen to music and read books and, you know, interact with their... With the caretakers. So, I think that would be a good way to get some of the kids there. They mentioned the fencing by the Eagles. It should be the Lions Club for the Christmas tree.
Right.
And then the parking, they suggested that, you know, hopefully the property owners would let them use the parking. I think that's something that needs to be worked out formally. I'm sure it wouldn't be a problem, but, you know, no assumptions. And then also about alcohol sales. It said there would be perhaps beer and wine, but no hard alcohol. So, you know, I'm sure that you'll look into that to just make sure that that's permitted under our municipal code and that it would be okay with the police department. Because I know, you know, alcohol may be consumed at concerts in the park, but it's not necessarily sold or, you know, technically allowed under the law.
To follow up on that, I think that when we've had the last... The Zippy Race and another event that was in the park, they had a... An area for alcohol sales and also at the... Was it at the Day in the Park?
The Day in the Park, yeah.
Like a beer garden?
This year, yes, like a beer garden.
Yeah.
And best PTO had an additional license for that as well.
Yeah, and even though in the proposal, you know, they've listed an entity from South San Francisco, that doesn't mean that we're going to agree to all of this.
Okay, sure.
You know, we'd like the best PTO to have the first shot at having that beer garden.
Okay.
Wine, wine and beer.
Sure. And then also in the proposal, they mentioned how in the future they would like to consider hiring a publicist, but there isn't room in the budget for that. So, I'd be interested in, you know, exploring that more. Because if this event does become popular, I think, you know, having a formal publicist or maybe even someone on city staff who could work on outreach and, you know, that would be... It would be good to know what that budget item, line item would look like.
Sure.
And then as for security, has our police department confirmed that they can handle this type of event with, I think they estimated, three officers?
We haven't spoke in detail because we didn't want to get too far into the weeds before we had some direction from council as to whether or not this was going to occur. But if Lisa wants to speak to that, you're welcome to.
And that's correct. We have not had any discussions about security. And that would just depend on the, you know, the level, the number of people that would be attending.
Sure. Yeah, I would suggest if it's going to be a large number of people, you know, to suggest that the organizers hire, you know, private security so that the city doesn't have to bear that cost. And those are all my comments. Oh, one question I had was, how did you come up with the name Oasis Festival?
That was Jimmy and Michael's suggestion.
Okay.
Previously, as staff and I think even the subcommittee, we're just calling it Mountain Fest because we know what to call it. But they really want to honor the mountain and they didn't want people to assume that by calling it Mountain Fest that it would be on the mountain. So, they thought like Mountain Oasis would be a celebration of the mountain itself and kind of guide people to thinking about what the event would entail. So, it was their suggestion.
Yeah, I like that because you always hear Brisbane referred to... Or sometimes you refer to it, hear it referred to as an urban oasis, but not a mountain oasis. I like that because it emphasizes the mountain. So, very good. So, do we have any motions? Or is there any other discussion, questions? Oh, I forgot. Pardon me. I want to open it up to the public. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item from the public? Paul Biscow? I got so excited about it, I couldn't see behind.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, I want to thank Cliff for making the proposal to have Mountain Watch be the beneficiary. It would mean a lot to Mountain Watch. And in turn, we agreed to have volunteers there to help with the covered stations or whatever needs there were for people to be there for the race event. So, I want to thank you for putting us up there. And I hope the event goes off. And I'm not sure, have you been dealing with Ramona with the county?
I need to talk to Ramona.
Okay.
I want to kind of put the...
Okay, but anything Mountain Watch can do to help any of the planning as well, so thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
So, I do have a question.
Okay.
When looking through this on the proposal. So, the fencing there, assuming it's going to be the portable orange construction barrier fence?
I think they were thinking more in line with what the Lions Club does at the Christmas tree lot, like a...
So, the portable chain link fence? Because in the preliminary financial breakdown, they have police security cleanup, porta potties 2,500 and doormen. So, you know, the... There. But then they also have city support that they would want the Park and Recreation to provide the tables, chairs and porta potties and the police to provide security and Public Works to provide the fencing.
Right.
And I think fencing the entire park is a pretty expensive proposition if they're doing real construction chain link fence. And I'm not sure. That doesn't look like it's been put into the budget at all.
That's one of the things that we talked about as possible inflation to their budget. So, they're estimating about $21,500. And that was one of the factors that we considered. That wasn't in their proposal. That would be an additional cost. So, that's why we said $30,000 because there were other factors to consider in terms of the expense, fencing being one of them.
Yeah, that's a good point because the fencing at the Lions Club Christmas tree lot is a much smaller area. So, even if they had access to that, they would need a lot more.
I'm sure they rent that. Well, I'm not sure they rent it. I'm assuming that they...
Right.
They rent it or, you know, it's construction fencing and it's quite expensive. I...
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, you know, I wonder if we need that kind of heavy-duty fencing. You know, Randy might have some ideas for containing that area. I mean, a lot of it's already self-contained. There's fencing around Old County Road. You have the bathroom. That's blocking off. I mean, and then you're going to close out on San Francisco.
I think there's a lot of details that need to be worked out. And, you know, what we're looking for tonight is the direction to work those out with Jimmy and Michael and work with staff and just have Noreen be the, you know, working to work with everybody. So, you're right, there's a lot of little things that we need to work through. And if something out of the ordinary happens, of course, we would come back and we'd inform council. But as I... You know, we think, you know, somewhere between 15 and 30,000 as an outlay in the first year seems reasonable.
In the past, they used temporary fencing at the park with that orange stuff, you know, not chain link fence, and that seemed to be adequate, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever you do, a motion to approve.
Second? Is there a second?
So, what... Just as a follow-up for probably for Stuart, what was the amount that we spent on the Day in the Park last year?
Last year was 30,000.
Okay, so 30,000 for a one-day event?
Higher, 35?
33.
33.
Thirty... 30,000 plus for a one-day event is not out of our ordinary, but we're not intending to that... Have that extensive of Day in the Park this year.
Last year's Day in the Park was bigger than usually one.
Right. We were looking at something back in the $20,000 range for this year.
The typical cost is 25, so...
Okay. Great, thank you.
All right, so I'll make... Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's approved. Thank you.
Motion to extend the meeting to 10:45?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to new business, item A. Consider adoption of mitigated negative declaration for construction of new Brisbane Library at 163 Visitation Avenue, case ER-2-16. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you. Honorable Mayor, members of the council, as you're well aware, the city's moving forward with designing the new Brisbane Library. Construction of the library constitutes a project under the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, and therefore is subject to environmental review. City's hired an environmental consultant who prepared the attached initial study, which concludes that the limited environmental impacts of the project can be mitigated to a less significant level and recommends the adoption of a mitigated negative declaration. Impacts are relatively limited. There are very few topics. Construction-related impacts associated with tree removal, noise and dust can be mitigated. And there are also potential seismic and geotechnical impacts which can be mitigated through appropriate grading and structural design. This is a reminder, staff is a decision-making body that will ultimately approve the construction of the library. It's appropriate that you be the agency or the body that consider the mitigated negative declaration. Action on the mitigated negative declaration at this time does not constitute approval of the project. These are two separate actions. The city engineer will come back with you in sometime in the future to obtain the final city council approval, to approve the final plans and specs and request the city approve the publishing of the bids. That would constitute your formal approval of the project. All we're asking you to do tonight is to adopt the mitigated negative declaration. With that, we're recommending you take that action and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Questions?
I don't have any.
Motion to approve mitigated negative declaration, case ER-2-16.
Second.
Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak on this item?
Oh, they're breaking the door down to get in to speak.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. It passes. Okay, new business, item B. Consider approval of request of additional $3,000 for 2017 summer concerts in the park.
Motion to approve $3,000 for 2017.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any discussion? Any public comment? All those in favor? Aye, did you do that? Yes, okay. It passes, sorry. I took that step already, okay. Oh, actually, I did have a comment. It was on the back of my thing. So, I had a question, if it's still permissible to ask this. So, with the... So, for donations, the staff report said that donations were lower in the past. They have been lower. And I'm wondering, would these types of donations be tax deductible? And also, could employees that have employers with matching programs get their employers to contribute?
Yes.
Okay. Then I'd like to suggest, if we don't already emphasize that...
We do.
Okay.
And we... When we talk... When we send out the letter, we do write that as part of the letter to our past donors. And then we also, I think, include in some of our material. But we'll make sure we emphasize that a little bit more.
Okay.
In this upcoming one.
Thank you.
You know, I have a question, Laura, since you brought that up. So, yeah, and the staff report says that the donations have gone down. And have you gotten any feedback for... From those donors, why they're not contributing?
I think what happened was that during the... There's... I would say there's a couple of things that happened. Different staff assignments, different people are better at raising money than others is a part of the challenge. And then during the recession, people stopped giving because it was recession and they just never picked it back up. So, I... And then what we have also heard from some of the donors is that they did not feel as if the money they were donating were changing the concert schedule in and of itself. So, if the concert schedule is going to be the same, they felt that they didn't need to donate as much. So, that's why we suggested of staff to say that what we would do is look at the donations that we receive in one year and base our concert schedule based on that donation in the next year. So, that way, the donate... The people who donate see a direct correlation between the concert schedules that we have and their donations. The downside to saying that we're only going to have the donations pay for the concerts is we start raising our money in January and, you know, we stop in June is kind of our schedule. We book our bands in February. So, what would happen is if we didn't raise as much in donations that we had anticipated with the bands that we booked, we would need to cancel bands. So, the idea is that we would basically lag the donations one year and we would just anticipate that we would... So, if we raised 15,000 this year, we would expect to have about 15,000 worth of bands next year, either through better bands or through a longer concert schedule. If at some point in time, another recession hits and people are not as willing to give, you know, we would probably come back to the city council and say, "What level of a concert schedule would you have? Want us to have regardless of how much we raised in donations?"
Okay, so no money that was given as a donation for concerts in the park ever went into the general plan for other things? Only the money that was donated, that was raised, went to concerts in the parks in some fashion?
In some fashion. You know, one of the things that, you know, that goes along with the concerts in the park is not only the cost of the bands, but it's also the cost of the staff to go raise money. It's the cost of staff to clean up in the park. It's the cost of the staff to coordinate the band schedule. So, there's a lot of staff costs that we don't attribute directly to concerts in the park that we spend.
Okay.
So, you know, I think in the highest year, we raised 12 to $13,000 and we had $10,000 worth of bands in that year. So, you know, staff time obviously does cost more than $3,000 to put on events like this.
Yes. You know, I mean, there's... You know, I'm getting some feedback from the community that some folks felt that their money wasn't going into...
The bands.
Well, just into the concerts of the park. And, you know, and maybe there was the... You know, I think some miscommunication because you're right. I mean, there's more than just the cost of the bands to put on these concerts. So, you know, and maybe now that that's been clarified, we might be able to get some of those donors to come back.
That is our hope.
Yeah, and it says that the... That there will be increased outreach for donations this year, so...
Right, good. And we have more staff in Parks and Recreation this year than we've had in the past. So, they are going to be more dedicated to it this year.
Okay, thank you.
But we also have more giving opportunities with the library fundraising also.
That's true. Okay. Moving on to item B. Consider approval of request... Oh, excuse me, that was adjusted. Item C, receive update on encouraging helmet safety at the skate park. Staff report, please.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor, City Council, my name is Ricardo Monroy. I'm the Recreation Coordinator. I'm here to speak on encouraging helmet safety and awareness in Brisbane. Encouraging and support collaborative partnerships with local skate shops and contractors to promote helmet safety. We would ask for their support by purchasing and distributing helmets to support our goal of a safe environment for all skateboard... Skate park patrons. Skate park patrons have been enjoying the renovated skate park, which opened in June 2016. The city of Brisbane has posted informative signs noting municipal codes indicating that helmets are required to be worn at all times by skate park users. The rules of the skate park have also been printed in the City Star Newsletter, which is mailed to all Brisbane residents. Although the patrons are usually receptive to the idea, many have complained about helmets being expensive and uncomfortable to wear. Discussion, staff is proposing a collaborative partnership with either the San Francisco Skate Club or Atlas Skate Shop in San Mateo. Atlas Skate Shop is the existing service provider of skateboarding classes in Brisbane. Instructors continuously emphasize the importance of safety and each participant is required to wear full pads and a helmet during classes. The purpose of this partnership would be to purchase helmets at a discounted rate... would be to purchase helmets at a discounted rate through the skate shops and to conduct a demonstration event at the skate park where the helmets could be distributed. Recipients would be asked to sign a contract stating that they will wear the helmet while skateboarding and ultimately support our safety objective. Fiscal impact. City council is being asked to authorize the purchase of forty Pro-Tech helmets at approximately twenty-five dollars each. Partnering with the skate shop allows the city to purchase the helmets at a discounted rate. Total cost is not to exceed a thousand dollars. Measures of success, an increase in helmets and safety gear being worn by skate park patrons.
Thank you.
I'm open to answering any questions.
Just want to say, this was, I'm glad to see this was one of the items I had asked be brought forward, because, you know, we did build the new skate park, and now that, you know, the city is behind it, I want to make sure that the kids there, the skaters are using the helmets as required by law. So I think this is a good creative way to do that. I did have a couple of questions, but I'll let my colleagues go first.
Thank you. Yeah. Thanks, Ricardo, for the staff report. Just, what's the ramifications? This guy gets a helmet or a gal, and they wear it and they go through the program, and then next day, you know, probably at home hanging on a shelf or somewhere, and there they are skating. Is there any recourse or ramifications? I know they're signing a contract saying, well, I'll wear it, and then they don't.
Perhaps the police department can comment on enforcement?
We do have a municipal code also that we, we have used in the past with administrative citations, where they, the, the individual who's not wearing their helmet won't get a five-dollar citation for their first offense, and then, and then it goes on from there. But we can also not allow them to skate at the park, and, and they come back, then they could, we can issue a citation. The problem is, is that we're not, there's not twenty-four-hour enforcement there. So it's very difficult to be able to follow through and follow up on that. That's generally our problem.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the point is, I certainly agree with the educational thing, but, you know, it's, it's also a culture, you know, that happens, and it might be kind of hard to police, you know. And, and I wouldn't want our police department standing out there, you know. You know what I mean? They got better things to do. And, you know, even though it's the law, everything like that, it's just, you know, we don't want to be over-restrictive where we're starting to kick people out of the park, or taking away their skateboard and cutting it in half or something like that, you know. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Something where it's too radical, where we're now discouraging use of the skate park, and becomes a concrete monument.
But I don't think enforcement is necessarily radical. I mean, I think I've heard in Pacifica that the police do, you know, pass by, and when they see someone without a helmet, that they, they do enforce it. And I like the idea that our chief suggested of, you know, asking them to leave, and giving them a warning essentially, and saying, you're not going to be allowed to continue to skate here unless you wear the helmet. And, you know, if they come back again, and they get caught without the helmet, then the enforcement comes down. But I, I mean, I understand what you're saying, Clark, about the culture, but I think, you know, we need to start from, you know, this moment forward of, you know, setting the culture and the standards. And, you know, it's a small community, so I think, you know, once people know what the rules are, they'll be willing to follow them. And if they are taking one of these classes, they're already required to wear a helmet. You know, it's kind of the analogy, like, is if, if someone's at the swimming pool and they go into the deep end, you know, the lifeguard's going to stop them and say, you know, you're not allowed to go there unless you pass the test. Or if, you know, my kids will try and go in the kiddie pool, we'll get kicked out because they're too big. Whatever the rules are, you know, it's like they have to be followed for safety.
I don't disagree with that. You know, I'm just saying, I don't want us spending, you know, a whole lot of time on it, you know, with the, with the police department on trying to, you know.
Right.
Yeah. I think we can agree.
Point's well taken. Terry?
I have a question. Aren't these helmets sized by the kids' ages? And...
They are not. Pro-Techs are usually one size fits all.
I mean, I've, I know from people with their kids with their bike helmets that they aren't one size fit all, so I'm not sure how a one size fit all really does a good job on that. And just like their skateboards are very particular to them, don't they wear helmets that are particular to their culture and their style?
Actually, that was one of the things I thought of about whether, I've heard this somewhere else, that you could, like, decorate a helmet and have a, you know, decorate your own helmet event, where that's where they get handed out. Maybe have a, I was going to suggest, like, have a, a skater demonstration where someone maybe who's an instructor or a professional skater comes and gives a demo, and then the kids could actually take the helmets and make them their own and put on their own style. I mean, I don't know what skating style is, so, but it has a blank.
Terry, to answer your question, I do know a little bit about that, you know, being an avid skateboarder.
You and, you and me, Clark, right? We're there.
Yeah, we're there. We're the main...
No, he's running the marathon.
You haven't seen us on Sunday. So anyway, they have, you know, like pads that they sit in there, that go in there to make the helmet smaller or larger, you know. So there's different, different pads that the helmet comes with.
So we, we...
To size it themselves, so.
We had some, a couple of comments from the public that I saw emailed. And while I don't think it's bad to provide helmets to kids that need them, I think that we should, it's probably not a cost thing for most kids, for the helmet part, to be in compliance. But I think that it was brought up a couple of different points in, in the letter that I read, but that it might be better to make them available to kids that need a helmet, rather than just, you know, the first twenty-five kids that walk through the door that are going to go in the pile with the other three helmets that they've got, that they forget. And so wouldn't that be a better use of funds, is, is do the outreach and let the police department know, you know, when they're driving by and they've got time to say, hey, guys, you're supposed to be wearing your helmet. If you don't have one, come down to City Hall, or we can give you, or maybe even a coupon to say, you know...
To receive one.
That the next time they're going to the skate shop to get new wheels, or whatever they do when they go and upgrade their skateboard, that they can also get a helmet or some other safety equipment. I mean, I think they should be wearing them, but...
Well, I like the idea, though, Terry, I mean, initially of the, of the safety class, you know, that, I, I think that's effective, that, you know, you're teaching them there, at least having the class. And to do it, you know, rely on the police department or a kid showing up, I don't know how effective that would be, I think. You know, kind of like, the kids, the school sponsored like a bike rodeo, you know, and bicycle safety and stuff, and, and they handed out little freebies for the kids and things like that. And it was real effective, because, you know, a lot of kids started riding their bike to school, but you can see that they're real careful about, you know, across streets and stuff, you know, just watching, watching kids riding their bicycle and how they do it, you know, versus, you know, before, they're just a little more wild. After they went to the bike rodeo, you know, seeing kids that were, you know, practicing those things that they, they did learn. And I think that, you know, I, I think it's more effective, you know, just the comparison, so.
Honorable Mayor, if I may, I just would like to add that we do have a current, currently a school resource officer, and he is also working with Ricardo and going out there and do random checks. I think the, the important thing is that it's starting with the education aspect of it, and really just getting the word out there to the kids that you are going to be asked to leave if you don't follow the rules. And so we had agreed that, that our SRO Officer Malone would work with Ricardo, and they would go out there and do random spot checks, and just walk over there and, and kind of, you know, be strict about, okay, you don't have your, you know, do you have a helmet? And what we did before is we had, we had received helmets when it was more bicycle helmets, it wasn't skate helmets, from the state on a grant. And we would have kids that, that we knew that needed them, we'd have them write an essay to the police department on what the importance is of a helmet. They'd come down and bring their, their essay, and then we'd read it, and then we'd hand over a bicycle helmet to them. That's how we did it several years ago. But I just wanted to emphasize that our SRO will be working closely with Parks and Rec and with Ricardo to go out there and do these spot checks and really educate the kids about the importance of wearing their helmet.
Okay, great. I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, no, I think that's, you know, an effort that motivates. And I, I like that story. Thank you, Lisa, for sharing that. You know, the, you know, the, the whole safety issue of, you know, it's so important to wear a helmet. But, you know, so often, you know, we drive by the skate park and we see someone, and sometimes, you know, many times it's someone we don't even recognize, or from some other town or whatever, and they're not wearing a helmet, and, you know, and they're adults. And so if, if adults are skating and not wearing helmets, they're bad role models. I mean, I'm not saying they're bad people, but just, you know, we're really trying to emphasize, you know, the importance of wearing that helmet. And if, if we're not enforcing the, you know, the code, then, you know, it doesn't have to be a, you know, total crackdown type of effort, but whenever a police officer is driving by the skate park, which is probably fairly often, and they see someone just pulling over and saying, hey, you, you have a helmet or you have to leave. And, and I think then that becomes the word around the skating world that, okay, if you want to come to this really great skate park, you better bring your helmet. And if you don't, then you're going to have to leave. And, and I think then the other kids in our community will, will get the message, and they'll, and they'll wear the helmet, and we'll probably see more kids actually skating.
Okay, what about this, then? I want to suggest that if there's not enough interest in giving out the helmets, we could purchase the helmets, and if upon certain number of repeated violations that are found, then require the person, if it's a child, to write an essay about the importance of wearing a helmet. And in exchange, they will get their helmet from City Hall.
Yeah, I mean, I like the program that Lisa talked about, and I don't know if it's, you know, exactly like that, but I think there's...
Something creative to make it where they're not just disposed of.
Yeah, not the first twenty-five that say, okay, I want my helmet. And then, you know, and you're right, and they might have three helmets already at home, and then it's, no, you got to work for the helmet. And I, I, I like that approach. Yeah. And of course, yeah, you don't get to skate. You want that, you want to skate, and, hey, we'll get your helmet. Give us a good reason why, you know, and whatever you come up with.
There, there were times that with, for the habitual offenders, we would take their skateboard, bring it back to the station, have them come down, have their parents come down and pick up their skateboard, so that they, parents, and show them a video of some of the, some dangers of not wearing your helmet. And sometimes that worked. Sometimes it, sometimes it didn't, but sometimes it did work.
Okay.
Because the kids certainly want their skateboard back, even if they don't remember their helmet.
Well, sometimes they never told their parents, so they never came back for their skateboard.
Wow.
Because I'm sure their parents would not be happy to know that they have three helmets at home and were, were just choosing not to wear them.
Some man stole my skateboard. Call the police. Well, I think he was the police.
So this has been happening in Brisbane or somewhere else?
This was in Brisbane several, several years ago.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that, when we had those helmets available for bicycle and for skateboard.
Okay.
Motion to extend the meeting to eleven.
Do we really need to?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve, thousand dollars.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that. You know, as long as we have that type of program that, that Lisa has talked about.
We're not just giving them out, but the police department can come up with something. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We had to torture you. Stuart said...
Thank you, Ricardo.
Finally, we are on staff reports. Item A, city managers' report on upcoming activities.
No items.
Oh, good.
Wow.
Artist Evening of Sharing is Saturday night.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's at, I think, seven or seven-thirty, Mission Blue Center. Everyone should come and attend. Okay, mayor and council matters. Item A, county-wide assignments, subcommittee reports.
Tony Varios gave my, uh, report on the table, so I have no other comments.
Okay.
I...
Terry?
Gosh, don't think I've had a subcommittee rep...
Oh.
I don't think I've had one for a while.
Okay. Clark?
Ours was tonight, the subcommittee you and I had with Caroline.
Okay. All right. Well, I've, I've been busier than everyone else, because I'm the mayor now, so. All right. So I was at a Peninsula Clean Energy Board meeting last week, and I'm pleased to say that the board approved of three renewable energy products for their ECHO one hundred offering, three hydro and one solar. And they also discussed the second phase of their launch, which will take place in April. So by April, all residents and commercial, you know, commercial owners or renters in, in San Mateo County will be on Peninsula Clean Energy. So that'll, that'll be the final phase. And they're trying to encourage outreach to get more people to sign up for their ECHO one hundred offering, which is a hundred percent renewable energy. So you can do that by going onto PeninsulaCleanEnergy.com and opting up, and tell all your friends and family in the county to do the same. We have our municipal account set at that, but for residents and businesses, we're at the default offering, which is ECHO Plus, which is the lower tier. Madison and I had our liaison meeting with Parks and Recreation, and that went very well. I had the opportunity to go along with Randy, who's not here anymore, to San Francisco on the RAB Study Walking Tour, which was basically a walking tour led by the Public Works Department of San Francisco of the rail yard and, you know, Caltrains, or Caltrains, the track, we went and looked at their development for the plane, the plans for what they're going to do with the tracks when they elect, when they underground and electrify and all that.
They want to drop the two eighty overpass.
Yeah, they talked about all the issues about the, the two eighty overpass, and what happens when the train comes by, and for a significant period of time, you cannot get into or out of Mission Bay. And it's extremely, and it's a big issue for emergency vehicles, because if you're in an ambulance, you can't get to or from a hospital.
Think they would have thought about that in the environmental impact report?
Yeah, before they built the damn thing.
Before they approved all that crap.
Yeah. So, that was an interesting walking tour. And we talked about, a little bit about the, the potential impact on Brisbane. So we'll be keeping close watch on that.
We want to put all our rail yard stuff down there in Brisbane.
Yeah. I also went to the ABAG Special General Assembly earlier this week, and they had us talk about what is going to happen going forward with the merger with MTC. And then they, they broke us out into groups, like small groups, and we talked about, you know, what we see as the vision of ABAG going forward, and, you know, the bulk of, what most people wanted was local control. In our breakout session, it was a very interesting and lively discussion, because we had the incoming chair of MTC in the room. Most sessions had ABAG representatives, but we had both. So there was a lot of good discussion there. And then also last Friday, I attended the Council of Cities meeting where we approved of the two applicants for the regional positions that we had, we had voted on at our last meeting. And we had a really interesting discussion and presentation by this program they have in San Mateo about adopting a military unit. And they've done it since Vietnam, where their city basically has, like, letter writing and gift-giving campaigns, and they adopt a unit of the one hundred and first airborne division, and the troops love it. And they're trying to get more cities to join on to this. So I'm going to share that information with staff and see if we can come back with a potential resolution, and see if our city would be interested in doing that as well. So that was all from me.
You know, there was one thing that I forgot to mention. Clay and I went to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee for CAG, right? And I gave my first presentation to other elected folks, and it was, it was a lot of fun. And besides Clay, Karen Kinsner came down, and she put together a really nice PowerPoint for me, and... and she put together a really nice PowerPoint for me. And, you know, we'll see what happens. Knock on wood, we get that $850,000 to upgrade the Crocker Park Trail, and I'm feeling pretty good about it. So, we'll see what happens.
Okay. Okay. Moving on to item B, discuss Ballance hearing study schedule.
So, I think we can do B and C real quickly. The only change was Councilwoman Davis cannot make the March 30 meeting, so you could strike that. And otherwise, the schedule is as we previously discussed, unless you want to change something.
So, that was a Ballance hearing. So, would that then move that topic?
No, we didn't have any topic for that night.
Okay, so we would still be set to finish on the same timeline as laid out here?
As you're currently scheduled.
Okay.
There was a change that I had proposed, Clay.
Oh, yes, you did. You had requested that the February 21 meeting be February 28.
Yes.
That makes it really tight. It's-
You going out of Town Cliff, or?
I am. I'm just-
That's fine with me.
I mean, that'd make it a Tuesday and a Thursday meeting.
So, we're going to have a Tuesday and Thursday together.
Yeah, that's-
What the hell, we had a Monday and Thursday this week.
So, Clay, just kind of looking at what's potentially on the agenda, do we have that much, you know, that you could, that you'd have to put on the March 2, or?
We have a little election issue.
Yeah, right.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
We could do that combined with the Ballance hearing, but-
You guys.
What?
Would that be too much to have one in addition to the other?
Don't go there.
Well, is the one that's set for the 21st, is that a continuation of the old topic?
No, that's February 16.
That's the new topic, okay.
February 21 is the new topic.
Okay, so February 28, does that work or not work for other people?
I'm okay with it.
The March 2 meeting could just be just the one item, correct?
Oh, God, no. It's a regular council meeting, and you're skipping one a month. I mean, come on.
Okay. You know, originally, you had talked about that we could do two meetings in March for the Ballance.
Well, yeah, I mean-
That's what you said before. That's why I'm asking this.
I know, but if we have a council meeting, I mean, it's never just one item, right? So, I mean, there would be other items.
Significant items, or?
One never knows.
Well, the city attorney's got, is going to review with you Prop 64, which is the marijuana initiative that was passed by the voters, and go through various decision-making options you have. That probably will take some time.
Is he bringing marijuana brownies?
Stuart said there's a couple Parks and Recreation issues.
I think we'll talk to folks on the 2nd. That would probably mellow the-
I mean, we, I can certainly work to try to keep the March 2-
Meeting light.
Light, as light as we can.
Okay.
But, you know, the, I think the, well, you do have the election issue, and that will take whatever time it takes.
Okay.
Okay, so February 28.
So, it's either that or you missed the meeting?
Yes, yes. This is something that I had scheduled a while back.
And have you reached out to Madison about February 28?
She concurred that the 28th worked for her.
Okay, so-
Open to that.
I guess, Terry?
Well, I mean, I don't want to hold it up. I will make it work if I have to. It's just, you know, difficult when we have 11 o'clock nights with starting at 6:00 p.m. on study sessions that it makes for a really long night when you're doing it back to back to back and getting up the next morning to go to work, so.
Yeah. You know, I hope to have all my questions asked during that study session so that the time for the meeting is really geared towards the public so that we can get out earlier.
So, we have consensus to move it to February 28, or not?
Well, I mean, if that's what we have to do, I'll make adjustments in my schedule.
Okay. All right, so we'll move the 21st to the 28th.
Okay, and then the 30th is scratched.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on.
I have one question on this, though. After the June 15 meeting, you have a June hyphen July 31. Does that mean it's a whole two-month meeting? Or what is that?
No, it says to be determined.
So, it's just a, it's no date?
Well, it's your deliberations, and the schedule will have to be developed. And we're anticipating as we get closer to the end of your scheduled hearings, that we'll put together a schedule-
Okay.
During that period of time.
Okay, but it's not necessarily one meeting or several meetings, we just don't know yet.
Well, I think it's reasonable to expect it to be at least a couple of meetings.
Okay.
Okay.
Say the least.
Mayor, if, I apologize, but I do need to go back. We placed a couple of items on your dais there that are requests from the League of California Cities to write letters in support of a couple of different items. And since they're both having to do with housing issues, I thought I'd bring them to the council and get concurrence before we just went forward with the writing of the letters. One of them is SB 2, and the other is SB 3.
Okay, can you briefly describe them, Pete?
Well, I can read them to you.
Okay.
SB 3 is a $3 billion general obligation bond to fund affordable housing programs in infill infrastructure projects. So, it's trying to create some, you know, revenue base. Presumably, that would be placed before the voters in June of 2018, I believe. And then SB 2 is a little bit different. It's increased in ongoing funding for affordable housing and critical stabilized states' housing development and construction marketplace. This one actually would apply a $75 recordation fee on real estate documents to create a statewide revenue source. This one is one, I know that it kind of came about after the decline of redevelopment, and they were looking for affordable housing funds.
So, I have a question. Our new lobbyists, where, what is their position on these?
Well, their position would be whatever our position is. I mean, they haven't provided any separate analysis. I haven't wanted to necessarily spend money with them on this particular issue.
But wouldn't that be part of their scope of work on, because these are two of the bills that they talked about, Beal and Atkins, that they were the ones that-
I could certainly get them to do an analysis if you would like, beyond what the leak. Our normal process over the years is that we have, when the leak sends out notices to send letters of support, we've usually gone along with that, with some rare exceptions. The only reason I brought these forward is that, you know, the housing issues tend to be a little bit more controversial for us, and I didn't want to get too far out in front of those issues, make sure the council's comfortable supporting these.
Well, it looks like these are authorizing funding for affordable housing rather than trying to take away local control like some of the other bills were turned about.
Yeah, I know, and I realized that. And I just, when we had the discussion with the lobbyists, they said that, you know, most of their work, you know, they'd, and they actually called out, I think, these two bills to begin with, that they, as part of their action with us, that would be a normal report we got when these bills were coming forward on where they thought that our interests would lie on them. And so, I just didn't know if that was something that they had also commented on. I wasn't asking for a specific-
Not specifically to these bills yet, yeah.
Okay, because I know that they commented on them when we had our discussion and our introduction to them.
Yes.
And I just didn't know if they, if that was something that-
Dan and Scott Wiener.
That's a good point. I mean, I'm comfortable with having, just, you know, having, it looks like staff's reviewed these. And if they, if staff feels like it rises to the level of concern that we want to then have the consultant look at it, then fine, but it doesn't sound like that's the case here.
No, I would recommend the council approving these. And, you know, like Clay had said, typically when the League of California Cities gets behind something, we usually go with it. Of course, if there's something that's really against our values, no. But these seem to be not dealing with local control.
Okay, I just didn't have a chance to look at them because they were just on our dais.
So, the consensus is to support these? Do we need a motion?
Yeah, I don't think we need a motion.
I don't think you need a motion. We'll go ahead and prepare the letters for the mayor's signature.
Okay, great. Okay. So, then we have written communications. I want to acknowledge the non-Ballance-related written correspondence that's been received between January 4 and February 2, 2017. We have received correspondence from Linda Detmer, Tony Hopper, Tony Varios, Terry Cook, Clara Johnson, Tony Varios again on January 24, Danny Ames, Don Cutler, Patrick Tainter, Tony Varios again on January 27, Danny Ames on January 29, Anne Pradines, Kim Folian, David Smuger, Cece Herman, and Karen Cunningham. And we are now at oral communications number two. Is there anyone who would like to speak on an item not on the agenda?
Good evening, council members. Actually, I hadn't thought about speaking about this until just two minutes ago, but I heard that somebody had complained about the Brisbane BART shuttle and the fact that there was a school bus that had been cut, funding had been cut, and they wanted to take the funding for the shuttle and use it for the school bus and didn't seem to realize that the two were not really related. So, I just wanted to voice my support for the Brisbane BART shuttle.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frim.
Okay, anybody else? Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.